We'll start recording. So the stream's not working, but we're recording and we'll have to post it later.
Okay.
Right now, we'll call the meeting to order for the common council Monday of July 7th. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Coffee?
Present.
Councilmember Olson here. Councilmember Sharkey?
Here.
Councilmember Dow?
Here.
Councilmember McDermott?
Here.
Request approval of the June 16th minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? You want everything a roll call or you want to just do it by voice?
Yes, roll call, please.
Okay, we're gonna call for a roll call vote.
Member Coffee?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Sharkey?
Aye.
Member Dow?
Yes.
Member McDermott?
Aye.
Unfinished business ordinance number 1780 2025 in our amending the Angola Municipal Code, Chapter 8.05, Solid Ways, taking our collection service to 1835.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Member Coffee?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Sharkey?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Any other unfinished business? New business ordinance number 1781 2025, an ordinance fixing the compensation appointed officers, deputies, and other employees of the police and firefighters of the City of Angola, Indiana, for the year 2026. This would be a first reading. Entertain a motion, then I'll explain what my proposal is.
Move to approve.
Motion second. This is my recommendation for the following year, which means we're coming into budgeting season, because this is always a first order of business when we do budgeting. We have lost our competitive advantage on our payroll, particularly with our first responders, fire, and police. So I'm proposing, although the CPI for this year is 2.6, down from 3.2 last year, 2.6 this year, I'm proposing a 4% across-the-board increase.
Mayor, are you behind? Are we behind? Is that what you're telling us?
We are not where we should be. We always like to be a little bit above surrounding areas, particularly in public safety. We are not there. That's why we started at a 4%. There are some exceptions to that 4%, and most of those are in the fire department. I am proposing the first-class firefighter, we increase that 6%, firefighter, increase that 6%, part-time firefighters, an increase of 14%. And the other exception to that 4% across the board is with our part-time employees. They're currently at $21 an hour. I moved it up to $22 an hour. This is my recommendation for the year 2026.
So I'm just kinda curious, does that make you equitable or us equitable then across the area?
Yes.
Or are we gonna be the leader of this?
Right now, particularly in the police department, we're on par with our Stubeck County. We offer longevity pay, they do not. We offer shift differential, they do not. But other than that, we're pretty well matched with Stubeck County. This will put us above what Stubeck County is currently paying, particularly if you look at the longevity pay and the shift differential pay. We'll be a little bit better off. There are some issues on sustainability, given the Senate Enrolled Act I that went through. Brian and I are both concerned about that. We are somewhat taking a leap of faith that we will be able to make this work going forward, but we do want to reward our employees. We do want to pay them well. The firefighters were a little bit low. If you look at the, if you annualize their income, Brian did a very in-depth study on wage and benefits for police and fire, comparing first-class to first-class. The fire department were a little bit low. We do want to increase that by going to 6%. It'll actually move them up a little bit over the fire, but one of the problems we have with the fire department is the pension. There is an issue making the pension equal because of the way that we pay our firemen in the mandatory overtime that they have to work, but their pension is based on that first-class firefighter pension. So by giving the 6% to the first class, you also will reward more on the pension for the higher-paid guy, so he actually spreads it across the entire.
You're looking for a bigger picture.
We're trying to, yeah, we're trying. Does that totally fix the pension issue? It does not do that, but it does move in the right direction, and it is a fair and equitable pay adjustment.
Do the city employees understand what you're trying to do?
I hope they do.
I mean, it's a good thing.
It is a very generous pay. It is well above what the CPI was. Last year was 3.2, we gave a 3.5, so we were slightly above the CPI. Even though the CPI has gone down, it doesn't feel that way when you go to the grocery store or you go out to eat, or you go shopping with your family, or you take them to the, or whatever you do, it doesn't feel like inflation is down. So that's why I wanted to go over and above the CPI and be as generous as we possibly could, and still be able to maintain sustainability of our budgets.
I learned in business that money is a short-term positive motivator, but if it's not, if equity is not there, it's a long-term bad demotivator.
I agree.
So it's probably a good step. The only other question I have, and then I'll let the other members get in, was really for Ryan, you know, and you touched on it. Based on today's situation, it sounds like where it's feasible to cover without having to worry about sustainability. And you're wondering about the future.
We are concerned.
And I think I'm there too, but I look at it from today, and I hear it's okay. Because the question that I don't want to do is think today we're gonna put something in. We automatically already know we're gonna have to put a burden on the taxpayers, and that's not what you're saying. Only if things kind of fall apart on other revenue streams.
We've got, and we'll get into the details of our future finances as we go through the budget process. We don't need to dwell on that this evening. The county has given their supervisors and their department heads guidance that there will be no pay adjustments this year at the county level. The mayors that I have spoke to, and I've spoke to a lot of them, they are looking at 0% increase for their employees to a maximum of what I was projecting or what I was offering was 4%, but that was a pretty small group of people that thought that they would give 0% increase for their employees this year. This is by far on the high side of what other communities are doing. Most of them were in the 2%, 2.5% range.
I know. Go ahead. I'm sorry. No, all I was gonna say was, I was, my biggest thing as a manager was, equity was one of the most important things to keep the morale and people focused. And so I applaud it. I like it.
I know that we have. Go ahead, Jed.
Oh, I was just curious on if there were any additional positions included. Did we add any staff members to this?
Fire Department, the Fire Department, the chief asked, requested that we add a training officer, and that has been added into this ordinance. And we can discuss that going forward. That's the only additional position that's been added. We actually eliminated the classification of lieutenant in the fire department, because we didn't have anybody at that level. We've been going right from first-class fire to captain. We haven't been using that lieutenant rank, so we did eliminate that from this ordinance. But it does add one position, which is a training officer. He'll be responsible for internal training within our department, and he'll also be responsible for our high school training program. Both of those operations will fall underneath that new rules, is what we are putting out there.
Thank you.
Ms. Ray, Councilman Sharkey's, I think I have one more step on yours. Would it potentially preclude down the road adding more staff? Am I agreeing to all that, Ms. Sharkey? Is that concerned down the road, we're gonna have to have more people, because I think we're on your staff.
We are on your staff.
I think so too. And will that preclude our ability? I support this. I'm not trying to jive that. Down the road, we're gonna have to resolve the problem of increased staff. What's your comments on that? That's my thing.
The comment that I would give you right now, no, it doesn't preclude us from adding more headcount down the road. It's just a matter of adding more people in the payroll, and we can certainly have those conversations. Right now, Ryan and I try to keep our growth around 3% or 4% on year-over-year budget. This will grow, this pay scheme will grow, and adding that person between those two, we're estimating, or I'm estimating, I think around 8% or 9% to the maintenance and operation of the budgeted fire department, just with what we're proposing here. But no, it does not preclude us from adding more headcount.
That's good, because I know there's a lot of folks that have left our service for better opportunities elsewhere, and maybe in the process of doing so. So, you know, the pension is something that we've really gotta look at, and I know you've got some good steps here. Chief, are you pretty much on board with this?
With the proposed salary ordinance? So the conversations that the mayor and I have had, quite a few this last week and a half, and my topic that I've brought to him is what can we do to close the gap? I understand we may not get dollar-for-dollar in pension parity, but what can we do to close that gap to help with my retention because of what you had just mentioned?
Okay, thank you. It's a good step forward.
All questions?
Anybody ready? Roll call vote, please, and we do have a motion of second.
Councilmember Coffee?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Member Sharkey?
Yes.
Member Dow?
Yes.
Member McDermott?
Yes.
ordinance number 1782 2025 in our amending the City of Angola Code ordinances Title IX, Public Peace, Morale, and Welfare, Chapter 9.05, General Offenses, Open Burning. Chief, you wanna, have you kind of drafted this? I will. I don't know what you have in your packets. If you've got a copy, our original burn ordinance was established 1993 under Mayor Selman, Peg Bloodsoe, and Chief Meek. What had happened to bring this up in conversation, as we get into the spring of 2025, we noticed that the burn permit section of, which is part of our ordinance and part of the requirement for city residents, when people go on, put in for a burn permit, the system wasn't functioning as intended. So we started digging into it. Mark was working on that, started conversation with Attorney Kim, and between the two of us, I give him information from IDEM, I give him information, municipality is our size, basically what this ordinance is doing, it's taking the burn permit requirement out of the burn ordinance and kind of putting it on the self-governance of our residents. Best example I can give you to make this short is the night of high school graduation. I'm driving home. I see eight different households with campfires in their backyard with no burn permits that had been submitted. So, were they doing anything wrong? No, they were having fun, family, friends, celebrating the achievements of their high school graduate, right? And so after conversation with the mayor, and Ryan, and Kim, it's like, I think we can revise this, and I think we'll be okay. I don't have people to go out and police it if we was to leave it as it is, and 1993, it's time we take another look at it, so.
And to your point, just having a burn permit doesn't mean they're gonna follow this by the letter at all.
Oh, I copy that.
Yeah, I got you. I like it. I like it.
I'm concerned, though. We've got a state statute, open burning of certain vegetation and wood items, no permit required, and it doesn't allow an exception in that that I can find. It says, subject to subsection three of the chapter, and in subsection three, there's no condition that there's an alteration by a municipality. I don't disagree with what's here, but I don't know if we have authority to do that. I guess I'll turn to Mr. Schaub on that. By eliminating the section C, I'm not sure our section C was valid under this state statute, because it required a permit, and the Title 13 didn't require a permit for those types of open burning.
So 1993, I couldn't tell you what the statute was and what the requirement was. I know authority having jurisdiction.
I looked at it, but I looked and knew at one point, because it's at the end of the statute, Chief, but I don't remember, and I didn't copy it here, and what I copied.
Kim, you got anything to say, or you want me to finish saying what I'm saying? So authority having jurisdiction, as long as we meet or exceed state statutes, we can enact or hometown jurisdiction, meaning the City of Angola. That's the way I'm in my position now.
So you understand, though, Chief, this statute specifically says, says one thing, subject to section three of this chapter, a person may, and the only exception by the statute, so that is a preclusion statute, I think. It says that even though we have home rule, it's a preclusion statute, subject to section three, and section three doesn't give us any power to do that. That's what I'm concerned about. I'd like to see us table it till we can get a better.
Legal advice on this one, because this is a little above me.
The proposed statute prohibits burning of refuse, debris, construction materials, excuse me, things of that nature, with the exception of campfire-type burns. I don't believe the state statute that you're referring to in any way is in conflict with that.
Your recommendation is best?
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Who was that saying?
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coffee?
No.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dow?
Yes.
Councilmember McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing regarding the proposed award of a public-private agreement, Resolution Number 2025 891, a resolution of the City of Angola approving the award of build, operate, transfer contract with Kokosey Industries, Inc. Did I say that name right? We will open the public hearing for this. If you'd like to address the council, please make your way to the podium. Seeing no one moving to the podium, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on with the consideration of Resolution 2025 891, Resolution of the City of Angola approving award of the build, operate, transfer contract with Kokosey Industries Incorporated.
Move that we approve the resolution.
Motion second.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Can you explain?
This resolution, it just legally allows us to do this type of work. It's probably the easiest way to enter into this type of the BOT-style contract.
As opposed to doing a bid?
Prokagan?
Correct.
Okay. So it's only for Prokagan?
It's only for, well, this resolution allows us to do that, the city to do that purely. We are doing it for this Prokagan project.
And it's both the wire and sewer?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yes.
Just like, get around. After Prokagan activity is done, this contract.
No.
Thanks, sir.
Amanda, I'm trying to find where it was in here. It's in the project operating agreement, as I read through this. They talk about, part of our guarantee is that we own the land, but we don't own the land, and we don't own the easement that's going out there. Isn't that the state's easement? That was the only thing that concerned me in what I read in all of it.
So that's the next one. So I can either answer that now or wait till my.
I thought that this one incorporated that next one. I didn't.
What we're on now is solely the rest of it.
Okay.
The next one is the actual agreement that you offered.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coffee?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dow?
Yes.
Councilmember McDermott?
Yes.
Request approval of the build, operate, transfer agreement for Prokagan Utility Project Division 2 Construction with Kokosey Industry Incorporated for a guaranteed maximum amount of $17 million, $274,800.
A move that we approve.
Motion second, any discussion?
My question.
Your question. So the city will own the easements. There will be an agreement between the city and the DNR on the splitting of ownership post-construction.
Okay, that's built in, that we're gonna get the ownership, or at least own the easement.
Yes.
That's what I was concerned with. We were making a promise, maybe we couldn't keep, and are they gonna do that before they start building, or is that something? Okay.
So that will be a separate agreement between the city and DNR, because we're the applicant. The city can only, be the only entity to go into an agreement with Kokosey. So that's why it's set up that way, because of the funding mechanism.
We will have our easement, we'll be part of the easement. Because the state owns, they own that 100 feet or whatever it is, don't they? They own that. It isn't just an easement. They own the property, don't they?
Like in the park, or?
No, I mean, going from Hoosier Hill out, they, don't they?
Or along the road. Those are easements the city will own. That will be outside of the ride.
Okay, but.
Yes.
Part of the DOJ?
I'm sorry.
Part of the DOJ, or extra, ETJ?
Yes.
ETJ.
Yeah, so the easements along the road are all to the favor of the City of Angola. And then once it gets to park property, that's where that agreement between the city and the DNR will come into play.
Okay.
Because the DNR will own that infrastructure.
Got it now. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
When do we think, optimistically, that we're gonna skip dirt flying?
I can speak.
Yep. I'm Nathan Burn with Westlaw Engineering. We received an update from Kokosey today that they expect September 1st, which I think is technically Labor Day, so let's say September 2nd for them to start actual construction operations.
Okay.
And start September 7th.
Is, where are they starting at?
We have, we've seen some preliminary schedules from them. I know there's a lot of ground to cover there. I'll have to talk with them a bit more in specifics, but.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
That's a great question. We're gonna start it.
My best guess, it would be that they would start at south end and work north, just start where they could tie on and progress north.
Go towards the park, yeah.
Give or take September 1st.
They're gonna redo, let's start a wood hall, like redo that, and then head north.
Say on the sewer side, I know that, if I were them, I would start at the wood hall lift station, just because that's what needs upsized first for everything north to come south, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may be different crews, because the crew that worked on the lift station's quite different than the pipe crews, so they may be in parallels.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah.
Could be doing both.
Are they likely to build the lift station first before they start the pipe burial? Is that what you're saying, where they're gonna do all at the same time?
Like Lori stated, I think, based on the different crews, they might be working in parallel on the activities at the same time. I mean, they're gonna have tons of people in sight through the course of almost two years, so.
Question that I have, just what does it mean when it says guaranteed maximum amount? Does that mean that change orders won't change that amount, or do change, agreed-upon change orders will up it?
It could be up if it's a change in scope, but what has been submitted in the scoping letter, that's the maximum. So if scope doesn't change, price doesn't change.
And that 17 million, did that have the half a million contingency going in? Is that in that number of fifth?
Yeah. Yes, that includes $550,000 of built-in contingency. Yes.
And I saw somewhere in there, there's a, and maybe it was in the engineering piece, there was like a rate schedule. I know there's a bunch of rate schedules, but there was one of them that said it was a rate schedule that's set up between 2024 and 2025, adjusted in April, which would mean that the rate schedule was not correct. So I'm just wondering if we're basing, we're basing numbers off of, if that rate schedule is not correct, that's in our packet. It's towards the end, and it has like an F and V or an F and E at the bottom.
Those are.
Is that Westlaw?
Yeah, later on, but that is for construction admin and construction inspection, I guess you can speak on if you're, those are accurate.
Yeah, so it's fleece and band and brink, the F and V, and that's for the drinking and water project, and our, everything's hourly rate, not to exceed is the basis, so we'll bill on an hourly rate through that, but we have a not to exceed without scope change in our contract as well.
So that rate that's in our package, that's what is being worked off of?
Yes.
As far as rates?
Yes.
That was all. It caught me in that note at the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm cool. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coffee?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dow?
Yes.
Councilmember McDermott?
Yes.
Request approval of the agreement for Prokagan Utility Project Divisions One and Two, President Project Representation Services and Division Two Construction Administration Services with Westlaw Engineering, an amount of $924,700. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Coffee?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Sharkey?
Yes.
Member Dow?
Yes.
Member McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, request approval of the Prokagan Utility Project Division One Construction Administration Services Agreement with Fleece and Vanderbrink in the amount of $225,000. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Coffee?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Sharkey?
Yes.
Member Dow?
Yes.
Member McDermott?
Yes.
Request approval of the Prokagan Utility Project Division Three Construction Administration Services Agreement with Westlaw Engineering in the amount of $225,000. Move to approve.
Second.
I do have one question, though.
Go ahead, please.
Division three, is there a Division three and four?
Yes.
I couldn't remember. Where's four at in all this?
Division four is the water tower repainting, and we are handling that.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
I'm good.
I don't, Mayor, I don't believe the $225,000 is correct.
That didn't sound right for some reason. I was kind of hesitant.
Is it low?
I think I got copied from the other one.
It looks like a copy paste.
I think it was.
That was kind of what I was thinking. That's why I.
Yeah, it was more, it was significantly less than that amount. I don't have the exact number in my head, but.
It was more than 40,000.
It may be more in the 40 or 50.
I think it was 40,000.
Yeah.
Total.
Maybe 40, even just for CA.
You're complaining about the higher number. Is that what you think?
Gotta print it out a little thing.
Let's nail the number down, though. Let's make sure.
It is 40,000.
Okay, request approval in the amount of 40,000.
Yes.
So seconded it.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Coffee?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Member Sharkey?
Yes.
Member Dow?
Yes.
Member McDermott?
Yes.
Reports. Ryan, what do you got?
We had pre-closing last week for all of the bonds and grants and the anticipation notes associated with all these projects that we just approved contracts for. The closing is set for tomorrow, so funds will be transferred tomorrow, and we should be all set to go after that, so.
There you go.
That's all I got.
Kim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ritter? What's going on in the water department?
Nothing, Mayor. Not a thing, huh?
Not a thing.
It looks like.
Going well.
Everything's flowing well.
He's always smiling, even though a semi truck dropped through the valves for one of your water tower, because a guy was trying to get around the E tour for the parade. Fortunately, he did not break the pipes. It would have been an interesting experience if he.
It'd have been a wet one.
It would have been. It was right next to the Jackson Street Water Tower, and it's the main feed for the water tower, and it would have made one heck of a geyser.
That had been the new water park there?
It would have been, it would have been a splash pad on Stera. It probably would have lifted the truck right out of the. Chief, you got anything for us?
No report.
Sue?
Yes, sir.
Mark?
No report.
And the chief?
Counsel, happy to report that the camera system that we have installed in our police vehicles, they installed 20 of them, have all been installed, and they are all currently working.
And people are happy.[1789.24]
And people are happy because it's actually functioning the way it should. So, so far it has been a good decision and a good move on our part.
The techno, I was over and watched the technology. It's, it is absolutely amazing. You can see where the cars are. You can actually see a feed in the dispatcher what the car is seeing. It's, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a neat, neat system and appears to be working a hundred percent.
Correct.
Very pleased with that. Anything else, chief?
No, sir.
Request approval allowance accounts payable voucher seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two through seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three, only one million, eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and one lonely penny.
I move that the bills be paid.
Second.
Motion a second, roll call please.
Member Coffey?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Sharkey?
Yes.
Member Dow?
Yes.
Member McNermin?
Yes.
Anybody have any other business for this evening?
Yes, I do. Uh, I was out here when you were able to make the crosswalks over at Carlin Park and so forth. And I, I take my doctor opposed walk every morning. And I, I was wa, I was walking here the other day and there was a girl on a bike wanting to cross there. Cars are just zipping right past because there's no crossing guard. And then I go home and over by our house subdivision, there's, we got the lights and I, and I'm thinking, I, I'm hearing how dangerous it is for the crossing guards. Is there any way we can look into putting lights right there? And down, down on the Wayne Street to make it even safer?
We have looked at those and I will let uh, chief whip mine.
Actually, that was something that Chad and I just spoke of. And we're actually gonna be making contact with our electrical provider that has the big, big lights. Not just the street light that everyone has, but maybe floodlights or something that will actually illuminate the entire area a lot better than what it currently is doing. The nice part about Carlin, it looks like there is a location that we could mount two over that area. Uh, South Wayne, it looks like there may be only one option. But uh, we are definitely looking into those with the additional painting and everything else. South Wayne is by far one of our most dangerous intersections that we have, especially for crossing guards. So uh, that is something we are looking.
Exactly, because I was, I was watching this poor girl. She was waiting. Cars are just zipping past her like nothing. And I'm like.
Right, well, mind you, I've been at the bicycle crossing of Menards and, and Meyer and it's flashing like crazy and the, and at the top of the hill, where there's a red light and they still pay no attention. That's, that's just human nature.
But then, but you're, but you're at the hospital, you pop the thing and, and it's, it's go, come through. There's nothing for those kids to do that. They're just, they're hoping that, I guess, hope that the crossing guard shows up something.
That's more me with the knowledge by your church.
Yeah, and we haven't looked into those yet. This is, this is just additional.
I would like, I, I, I guess I'd like to have that looked into. Because if you're putting one there for the crossing, for the, the water park area, which I can market, surely the kids who are going to school or, or going to play.
Amanda, do we know what that cost for the uh, lights there, the, the?
Yeah, we looked into doing that um, at the library, maybe one to two years ago and it was around the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range.
Now is that, should be similar to the one that is near the new location of the water park?
Yes.